Okay, we're going to call our meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, tonight to our meeting. Thank you for taking time out of your busy day and coming to join us tonight for what's on our agenda. And I will call it to order, and our rule call will be our city by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
Okay, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. If you'll all rise, please, by Councilmember Franklin, and followed by invocation by Pastor Mike Hall, who's here from Faith Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hall.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and City Councilman, for allowing me to come and share the invocation with you tonight. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the city of Vista that we get to live in and just know so many people and be a part of our community. We thank you for so many blessings that come within this community, and yet, at the same time, there's many challenges, too, so we pray that you would be with the council members tonight. You give them wisdom to do things that are good for our city and community, for everybody involved in that, help them to have that humility to understand those decisions affect many people, but also the boldness to do what is right, too. And we pray, too, Lord, for those who serve within our community, especially in dangerous situations, from the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and others, who protect us and keep us safe. We thank you, Lord, for their sacrifices, their service, and we pray that you would watch over them in all things, and just continue to lead and guide our city into the future, bringing your blessings upon it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hall.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. Next is our approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, and there's no closed session this evening, so we won't have that. So the next thing on our agenda will be on the presentations, and we have three proclamations recognized in the recipients of the 2017 City of Vista Employee Awards. And if you'd like all to come down, we'll go down and do the -- we'll present those proclamations to them. And Jessica Farrell, Mayor's Excellence in Service, is not here right now, but if she shows up, we'll do her when she comes in. Okay, so Jess isn't here, so I will call up -- first, I'll call up Principal Engineer Elmer Alex. Where's Elmer? He snuck up on me, Elmer. Okay, so I have a word for him. I'm going to read this, and here is the proclamation for you. And we actually, I brought resident reward coins. We have new resident reward coins, City of Vista, that we have to give out to people for special occasions, and so I have one for each of the employees here that got these awards. So we're going to read their proclamation here. Whereas, Principal Engineer Elmer Alex was recently recognized as the recipient of the City of Vista 2017 Manager of the Year Award. Over the five years that Elmer's worked at the City of Vista, he's led several large sewer infrastructure improvement projects and modernized the sewer program by implementing the latest industry standard in sewer asset management. Whereas, through Elmer's leadership, he has formed or fostered a work environment where open communication is expected and respected. Workflow between both the engineering and public works wastewater groups has been seamless and collaborative. Whereas, Elmer has led several large sewer design projects, including the Agua Hidiana Pump and Lift Stations, the Green Oak Ranch Sewer Project, and the Buena Outfall Force Main Phase III Project. His technical knowledge and ability to find creative solutions to challenges has led to cost savings and successful designs. Whereas, with a comprehensive sewer management plan and asset management plan, Elmer led the effort to provide the city a risk-based approach to identifying problem sewer infrastructure. That's all exciting stuff, isn't it? Sewer stuff? This allows the city to be proactive instead of reactive to issues and to prioritize the sewer system for replacement or rehabilitation of sewer facilities. Whereas, under this plan, the improvements to the city include a new asset management plan software, new equipment for televising sewer lines, and a workflow that identifies potential issues and assigns projects to engineering or public works as appropriate. And whereas Elmer represents the City of Vista very well in the professional engineering field and has earned the respect of industry leaders at regulatory organizations, he is a model for his staff and a mentor to those who are seeking improvement. Elmer is a great manager and a valuable asset to the City of Vista. So now, therefore, the Mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Elmer Alex for being chosen the 2017 City of Vista Manager of the Year and do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 12, 2018, as Elmer Alex Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations to Elmer. Okay, and then next is Carrie. Is Carrie here? Carrie Hostetler?
Behind me.
Oh, my gosh, did you sneak behind me, too?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so I have this for you. Just a minute here. Here's the proclamation for you, and here is a resident reward coin. Who are you, from the city? And so I will read the proclamation for Carrie. Carrie is a ticket office supervisor. Carrie Hostetler was recently recognized as recipient of the City of Vista 2017 Employee of the Year Award. Whereas, VistaTix is known for its excellent customer service, and the person who sets the tone for ticketing and amphitheater staff is Carrie Hostetler. And whereas Carrie is always working to find a way to enhance the Moonlight patrons' experience, she goes out of her way to make sure every guest feels like they're a part of the Moonlight family, whether exchanging tickets, handling a concern, or just taking the time to listen. In addition to setting a positive example with her patrons' first attitude, Carrie also tackled an unexpected challenge this year by coming up with a creative, cost-effective, and quick solution. With the buyout of our current ticketing system, a subscription report that our box office relies upon to send out renewals was not accurately corresponding to actual ticket prices. Not only did Carrie catch the issue, she communicated the issue to the ticketing company clearly and immediately. When it became clear that the ticketing company would not have a quick solution, Carrie began working with her team to create a spreadsheet which could extract the data and allow her to manually create accurate renewal sheets for the Moonlight subscribers. A week later, the team had successfully mailed every subscriber packet, and I got one, actually. Now, therefore, the Mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Carrie Hostetler for being chosen as the 2017 City of Vista Employee of the Year and do hereby proclaim Friday, April 13, 2018, as Carrie Hostetler's Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations. Okay. And I don't see -- Jess is not here yet, is she? Yes, Hussein Mayor. Hussein there?
Jess.
Okay. She's just pulling in. So we're going to go with the consent calendar, and we'll come back and do this, okay, when she comes in. Okay. So moving on, and then we'll come back to Jess when she comes in. We're going to go to the consent calendar. The following recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request-to-speak card to their Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar, and we have 20 consent items this evening, C1 to C20. So with that, do I have anything from the public? We have one? No, I don't. Do I have anything from anyone here that wants to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I just need to abstain from C9.
Okay. Does she have to leave the room for that one?
No.
No, okay. You don't have to leave. You can stay. Okay. Okay, so then I would look for a motion.
Some more.
In a second. In a second, okay. And then, everyone, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously with the abstention on C9. And so, guys, Carrie here?
I see Jess.
I mean, Jess is just here? We don't see her yet. Wait, we're looking.
Yes.
Is she here?
Yes, Jess is here.
Yes, she's here. Yay! Okay. Okay, you guys want to all come back down again?
Sure.
I have a proclamation for you here, and then I have, and I have a resident reward coin here for you that we have been new for the City of Vista. Those are new from our city, so we're giving them to you. Yes, very cool. They're very cool. All right, so now I have a proclamation for Jess. Whereas Senior Code Enforcement Officer Jessica Farrell was recently recognized as the recipient of the City of Vista 2017 Mayor's Excellence in Service Award. Whereas Jessica has been instrumental in helping the code enforcement department run efficiently, she maintains a positive attitude and is a hard worker who is dedicated to her profession and sincerely enjoys doing all that she can to make Vista a better place to live. Whereas Jessica has streamlined all forms of the new crime-free multifamily housing program and has participated in multiple meetings collaborating with other departments and agencies to ensure that the program's implementation was positive. Whereas Jess has worked with the city GIS staff to improve the City Works program, making it more user-friendly for the code enforcement officers. And whereas Jess has been the liaison officer representing code enforcement for the South Vista Communities Group, keeping open lines of communication between the group and the city. After Jessica completed a difficult case, the group leader called her a miracle worker. And whereas Jessica supervises weekend officers and fosters a positive and creative working environment for the weekend team. She was also awarded the 2017 Kiwanis Employee of the Second Quarter for her admirable work cleaning up the creek area in Shadow Ridge. Whereas, as a senior code enforcement officer, Jessica handles the most difficult and politically sensitive cases that come to the city. Many of these cases involve multiple agencies, city departments, and the public. Jessica is able to manage these cases through the compliance, addressing a diverse range of issues, while consistently treating all customers with respect. So now, therefore, the Mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Jessica Farrell for being chosen as the recipient of the Mayor's Excellence in Service Award and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 11, tomorrow, as Jessica Farrell Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations to you. You have to shake all along. I have to go with congratulations and thank you. Today was not her workday, so she came in on her day off. Okay, so now, let's see, moving on, we've passed the consent calendar. That's all taken care of. We're going to go to our first public hearing. There's one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive public comment on the city's 2018 Regional Transportation Improvement Program. It's the RTIP. So there are no changes in this. So do you want to report with no changes on the RTIP? Or do you want to just? Well, do you need a report, or would you like to just pass it? Okay. Councilmember Regulera, Deputy Mayor.
I'll make a motion to accept the RTIP.
I'll second that.
Second? Motion and second?
Oh, yeah, and close the public hearing. Sorry.
Public hearing, right, okay. Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next thing on our agenda is our discussion items. We have two discussion items this evening. The first one is our fiscal year 2018-19 operating budget overview, and our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, is going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The purpose of tonight's discussion is to review the larger components of the fiscal year 2018-2019 general fund budget at more of a 30,000-foot or macro level and to obtain any direction from the City Council in preparation for presenting you with a full draft budget, which we expect to do in May. I did want to mention before we get started that for a long time, you would see Laura Johnson sitting up here with me. She retired last year after 16 years of service to the city and more than 40 in local government. She did give us a lot of notice, and so we were able to seamlessly fill her position with -- may I introduce you to Sarah Taylor, our new senior management analyst, who will be responsible for budgets. She's been with the city for about three years and was an accountant in finance before promoting into the budget position. So Sarah and I will be able to answer any questions you may have throughout this presentation. I also want to remind you that we prepare the annual operating budget as a team. The city staff starts budgeting process in September, and as we do every year, the individual departments from the management staff and the analysts, as well as supervisors and directors, review each budget unit on a line-item basis. We do that every year to ensure that the programs that we are proposing are reasonable and measurable for the city. And I want to recognize the efforts of all of the individuals who work in the departments as our budget process, but specifically to thank Laura once again for her past work, and then Sarah for all the time she's put in this year to get us to a sound document to provide you with and the information you'll see today. So tonight, we are going to look at an overview of our general fund revenues and expenditures by the major categories. We'll pull Propel out into its own special slide for you guys to look at, since that's something that comes into the general fund and then goes directly out. We'll go over a couple of the financial challenges that the city faces, talk about our general fund subsidized programs, highlight the accomplishments from 2017, and then quickly review your goals for 2018 and 2020, which you will see more in depth in the draft budget overview. And if you have any new direction to provide us, then we will take that and incorporate into what we bring back to you in May. So we will get started with revenues. So at this point in the fiscal year 18-19 budget preparation, the total general fund revenues are estimated to be $76.3 million. You'll see that on the far-right column at the very bottom. The majority of our revenues come from the following sources, and you'll see them up there on the slide, starting with property taxes, which we are estimating at just over $23 million. They have increased by about 6.2% over the original budget from 2017-18, and that is due to a number of properties that are still in the city on the Prop 8 recapture list coming off, as well as just moderate increases in the home sale of housing prices in our city. We also have sales tax, which exclusive of Proposition L is at about $17.32 million for 2018-19. You'll see that as a significant decrease from 2017-18. We've talked before about the one high sales tax generating business that is no longer in the city. We've already reduced the budget for 2018-18, as we did on the last quarterly report, by $1.4 million. We had budgeted about $1.8 million from that business alone in the current-year budget that went directly into our PERS reserve. It wasn't used for operating. So while you see a $2 million or $1-point-something-million-decrease, that's not something that we were using for operating money in this current-year budget. Transient occupancy taxes are also budgeted about $1.35. That number has been fairly stable since the two new hotels have been up and running for the last couple of years. And we also have, one of our larger items is franchise fees. Those are at $3.35 million in 2018-19. We had seen a drop in some years due to some decreases coming from SDG&E, but what we see nowadays is a trend in the cable franchises. The city has cable franchise agreements with the large operators that provide cable services and impact the right-of-way to do so. That's the purpose of the franchise fee, is to help us cover some of those costs. So we'll see those from Spectrum, which was Time Warner, Cox, and AT&amp;T. We never received franchise fees from satellite or Dish. They weren't impacting the right-of-way. They didn't require city franchises. But what you see now with consumers changing their TV-watching choices is a lot of people moving to Netflix, to Amazon Prime, Hulu. All of those different companies are coming through data. They are not coming through lines and wires, and franchises are not required. So as people cut their cable cord, the city sees less cable revenues, and we see that -- we've been seeing that for a couple of years. The next slide I have is related to Proposition L only, so I wanted to stop here briefly and see if you had any questions about these general expenditure revenue forecasts or general revenue forecasts at the moment.
Deputy Mayor.
You know, I had a question. You answered partially, the franchise fees. So do we expect, I mean, is this something that we could probably see going down in the future because of people switching to the Internet?
Correct.
Okay, so my other thought on that is, the way I get Internet is through a cable that Cox put in or AT&amp;T put in. Do we get some sort of franchise fee for that that gets installed? Because just because I don't have, you know, regular cable doesn't mean there's not a line going to my house or my business.
My understanding is that they do not pay for the cable or for the data portion of that service. We have a call-out to confirm, but if you look at the way the -- they have to turn in a quarterly report, and it's based on cable subscribers. It's not based, as I can tell, on people who are using just Internet services.
So I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe we need to look into that a little bit further. If we're, what we're doing is offsetting, you know, installation fees or, I guess, costs to the city, because they're tearing up our roads and, you know, to install typically in the past, it's been cable subscribers, people that watch TV. But that's still going to happen if somebody calls up, brand-new home, let's say, and they want to have Internet-only. They're just going to watch Netflix and Hulu. They're still going to, you know, still going to have to have some sort of a cable run to their house.
And we can provide further information. My understanding is that because the cable franchises are regulated by the PUC, and then the phone lines themselves are regulated by the PUC and then at the federal level, they're counted as a phone line, even though it's a cable service. It's that voice-over Internet protocol that now provides data as well. So we can look into that. If there's something that the city could do to offset some of those or find a way to cover the impact, we would like to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions here. Councilmember Franklin.
As the subscribership has fallen, or any of the costs that we're trying to cover falling?
So these costs are not specific that there's a fee out there. It's typically, so the franchise fee rate is set by the state, and it's a base of 5% on the cable costs or the cost of your basic cable package. It doesn't matter if it costs you more or less to provide that service through the right-of-way use. It's a set fee. So I think, for the most part, it would cover it, but it's not going to provide the same general fund revenue stream that we've seen in the past.
So we do have a, basically, a profit right now. We're taking in more revenue than?
I would have to pull all the permits that they, the permit counts from the counter to see how much time they're spending in the right-of-way, but yeah.
Keep an accounting of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Interesting.
Okay, so no further questions or comments? Go ahead.
Okay, so the next slide is our Propel projection that we present to you every year. This shows the full life of, the 30-year life of the measure. We are now at 2018-19, and we are estimating revenues of $7.8 million in Proposition L. This is adequate to fund the debt service and put a portion, oh, excuse me, debt service, the fire personnel costs, and put the remainder into our reserve. As we've talked about it over the last few years, we refunded, or we did a refinancing on the bonds in 2015, and that allowed us to reset our expenses to a rate that will allow for total funding of Proposition L, both the bonds and the fire operations, if the City Council desires at that time, through the life of the bonds. So if you look at this chart, you'll see that we are at 7.8, and then we estimate going out a modest 2% increase, and then we reset it every year based on the actuals. Are there any questions on Propel?
I don't see any.
So I'm going to move on to our general fund overview expense categories. These are the five major categories in which we budget in the general fund. General government includes administration for the City Council, City Manager, Attorney, Finance. Public service is the sheriff's contract and fire and EMS. Community development includes planning, building, development services, engineering, and code enforcement. Public works is your street maintenance, park maintenance, and lighting and landscape maintenance, all those types of things. And then community services are recreation programs, senior services, and cultural arts. Those pieces of the general fund total just under $70 million. When we go to our large page, where we break them out by the operating sections, the budgetary categories, that's $69 million plus the $1.5 million in the transfers out. Those are to the general fund subsidized accounts. And then we have just over $6.1 that transfers out to Propel to bring you to an expense estimate at this time of $77,680, $77,680,210. And so you'll see that at this point in the budget process, our expense budget is about $1.4 million over the revenue budget. But I just wanted to point out that this is fairly common at this point. When we were at the overview with you last year, we were, had a gap of about 1.7. The year prior, we had a gap of 1.3 at this point. We're still refining both our revenue estimates as well as the expense budgets to present you a balanced budget at the draft, but there are a couple of things that, number one, we want to get your direction if there are any changes on expenses, and then we're really conservative in not over-anticipating funds that don't exist yet. There is an item coming forward to the council next month, a user-free study that was requested as we have not done a comprehensive review of our permit fees at the development services counter in about 15 years. That item comes before the City Council at the first meeting in May. Any increase to revenues that come out of whatever the City Council approves will be incorporated when we bring you the draft budget, but you won't see that here now. So that's one of those things that we will be addressing in a draft budget. We have some specific expense items to go through in the next slides, so I wanted to stop here and see if you had any general questions about where the expenses are lying at this point.
Questions, anybody? Okay.
Moving on, we have a couple of areas of, not necessarily uncontrolled costs, but costs that are a little bit harder for the city to manage. The three main areas, of course, are public safety, which is a large portion of our general fund budget, healthcare, and then CalPERS. Public safety, right now, with the law enforcement contract, we're in year two of a five-year contract. Our contract amount for 2018-19 is just under $23 million. It's very large, as you know, but it is the most cost-effective way for the city to provide the robust services we can in law enforcement, given the amount of assistance and support we get through the contract for SWAT teams, Austria, other support that we need through that contract. And as well, the Vista Fire Department, their costs at this point are projected to be about $22 million. Healthcare is another large-ticket item, because we don't get our premium estimates or increases at the time we're budgeting. We kind of have to estimate based on the current year and then the, some trends in how the increases have gone up. And we have about, we budget in the 2017-18 year, $4.5 million in city costs for healthcare, and the 2018-19 budget is estimated right now at $4.8 million. And then the third item, I have a slide for you guys, and that's our CalPERS rates. As you can see in the slide, for 2018-19, the budget will include a payment of $7.5 million, and that's 14.6% over what we have in 2017-18. We've talked about this a couple of years. The national economy has come back, for the most part, but CalPERS has continued to struggle. They lost 40% of their market value in 2008 during the crash, and their mortality projections have now increased. We're living longer, so there's more people to pay for longer. And as well, since most agencies, both at the state and then on local levels, have rightsized and reduced positions, you now have less people in the workforce supporting the retirees. So all of those things being said, you're seeing increases that are fairly high. The other thing is, is their rates of return lately have not been great. There's definitely haven't been what they projected. They've had an average return rate of about 4.6% over the past three years, when we all know that if you're not restricted to some of the ways, for example, that we have to invest, you should be making a little bit more than that. They did implement, the state did implement in fiscal year 12-13, a second tier at a lower benefit. It's called the Peppera tier. We now have about 30% of our workforce are Peppera employees, meaning-- We now have about 30% of our workforce are Peppera employees, meaning that they join the workforce since that was implemented, and their benefits and their payments are at a lower rate. We think that by 2020, we'll be at about 45% of employees that are Peppera, and what that means in the long run is that our increases will be at a, they're still increased, but it should be at a lower rate, because the numbers you see on the screen where we're going out, you know, 50% in five years, will probably, this is based on our current employee makeup, not on maybe the '22-23 employee makeup, so those numbers will change as we go forward. But I just wanted to bring that up as an item that comes before you each year.
So, just so that I'm clear for the people in the audience, these numbers that you have up here, this is money that we have to pay into a pension deficit that we have, so, on our, basically, money we have to pay into for CalPERS because of a deficit that we have to fund.
It's not necessarily a deficit, it's a future, it's the cost of future retirement payments.
So, our unfunded liability is what you call it, right?
That's, no, that's a different. This is our annual payment based on our current employee makeup.
Okay.
The unfunded liability is a different number that fluctuates depending on how well CalPERS is doing.
Okay.
So, 15 years ago, when I started working for the city, there was no unfunded liability. CalPERS was doing very, very well. They, oh, excuse me, they were super-funded, and they were not even charging the cities an employer rate. The employees paid a portion, but the employer rate was zero in some cases. During, eight years later, we had unfunded liabilities that are much larger. And we talked about it more in depth than last year, as the city does have an unfunded liability. We've talked about paying it down, but the challenge is, you might pay it down, but if they have a poor return year, it's gonna go right back up. One of the things we did do to try and help offset some of those costs, or some of our annual costs if needed, is last year, the City Council authorized the creation of a pension trust fund. So, we're taking a portion of year-end fund balance money the City Council set aside, and investing that in a separate fund through our, through the finance department and financial managers.
Better return than 4%.
Then we can use that, if needed, to assist with our PERS costs.
Okay.
But for the moment, we're just using it as an investment fund for PERS items.
All right. Lots of confusing numbers, I just wanted to get clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yeah, and one thing I would mention, which I thought was interesting, 15 years ago, there were two active employees for each retiree to support and fund the pension, the cash flow, and currently, there's only 1.3 active employees for each retiree. So, and the retirees are living longer and utilizing their pensions longer, so, while there are fewer active employees contributing to the CalPERS, which is causing some of the issues, so, I thought that was kind of interesting. So, anybody else? Are we all set? Okay.
So, one of the things we want to talk about each year is to give you an idea of where the city's general fund subsidized units are looking in their budget. We have four units that are subsidized by the general fund, because they can't, they don't have the revenues to meet the programs. They're up in front of you, we have the Senior Nutrition Program, where we provide about 28,000 meals each year to low-income seniors in Vista, and also, in, we have an average about 39 of those people who come to the center for the meal are using the transportation service also provided. The Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, which provides arterial and residential streetlights, traffic signal maintenance, and then our tree trimming and landscape maintenance in the major arterials and rights-of-way. The Wave Water Park, as you know, that's our water park that's open all summer, and also then used during the year by the school districts as their pool. And then Cultural Arts, basically, the Moonlight, the AVO, and our Moonlight Stage and Moonlight Presents categories. In 2010, during the recession, the City Council established subsidy limits for each of those general fund subsidized units, and they work very hard to meet their revenues and expenditures to meet those. But there's a challenge for Senior Nutrition. They don't have a mechanism to raise revenues. And, you know, you've seen in the past where we bring fee increases for the Wave and for the Moonlight, to adjust ticket prices to market and to help to meet their programs. Because the Senior Nutrition Program relies on, heavily on a grant from the county, they cannot ask, they cannot charge a specific fee for the meal. They have a requested donation, but they do not turn away anybody who meets the age requirement in Vista for unwilling, or inability to pay. So, there's no way for them to meet, increase revenues to meet the services that are required. We've had the subsidy at $275,000 since 2010. As you can see right now, they are about 70, I don't have my number in front of me, I'm sorry, but they are above their subsidy level, and we think that is the time, is right for the City Council to look at increasing that subsidy, and the staff recommendation is to raise it to $350,000 a year. That will, they're still working on their budget, and we want to make sure that they're doing everything they can to refine those expenditures, but their revenues are very difficult to increase. And as costs increase, as you know, just for basic cost of living and utilities, water, all of those things impact their ability to meet that subsidy. So, at this time, I'm looking for either consensus of the council, if there's a willingness to increase that general fund subsidy, to, the staff recommendation is $350,000.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that's reasonable. If we haven't raised it since 2010, we're in 2018, we're looking at 2.5%, 3% increase. I don't have my financial calculator, so I can't do that in my head, but anyways, it seems to be around 2.5%, 3% a year increase, which would be somewhat in line with CIP. It's a little bit above it, but I think that's a reasonable amount, and given the circumstances, and who we're actually serving, I think it's a service that most people in the community would support, feeding our seniors.
Anybody else have anything? Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree. I think it's been a while. I'm over there frequently, as are a lot of us and even staff. They do a great job over there, and for some of our seniors, that's where they get out in the community, is to go to the senior center, and to have their meals, and to have their socialization. So, I am absolutely in favor of increasing our subsidies, so that we can keep these programs going.
Do you have any motion on that?
Just looking for consensus.
Need one more? Councilmember Green?
Consensus, raise it up to 350.
Thank you very much.
I agree also, so.
Any other questions or comments on the subsidized programs?
Anybody else, anything on that? Okay, see nothing, we'll move on again.
Let's move on to the fund stuff. We wanted to just briefly, and we've done this a couple of times, we did it at the State of the City, we did it at the Goal Setting Session, but just to remind you about some of the great work that the city is doing on your behalf. We have many accomplishments there, and we included the exhibit that we provided at the State of the Community in your agenda report, but I also just wanted to highlight increasing emergency reserves to 29%. 72 miles of streets that were repaved and refurbished in 2017. We opened the two new skate parks. We acquired the property at Polo Vista Civic Center for a new park space. We have the Honda dealership coming to town, and we had more than 4,000 people attending our Summer Movie in the Park events. We have more on the screen, and there's more on the slide, but I just wanted to, once again, thank staff and everybody else who helps us do these amazing projects for the city. Any questions about our accomplishments?
Any other questions here? No, see no other questions.
Second to the last slide is just to remind you of your new goals. These were established at the Goal Setting Session that we just had last month, eight priority goals, identified for 2018 to 2020, and listed on the screen. Fiscal responsibility, continuing to improve the flow of traffic, reduce congestion, improve roads and sidewalks, to develop a strategic plan to address homelessness, to continue to decrease blight and improve the city's image, economic development, public safety, parks and recreation, and to maintain standards for multifamily housing. As we do every two years, we're identifying strategies that will help the city to achieve these goals, and we'll be returning to the City Council next month, or June at the latest, with an action plan that includes those specific recommendations for the City Council's consideration, and then those items will be incorporated into the budget. Not sure if you have any questions about the goals. Councilmember Green?
I just have one question for you. I noticed that it said we spent $650,000 in traffic flow relief in 2017, which equates to about 0.08% of our budget, a little less than 1%. Since it's one of our top goals here in 2018-2020, how much money do we actually have allocated for traffic flow relief in 2018?
So, that, most of that stuff will come up in the capital improvement program budget, and, like, for example, the 72 miles of street and road repavement, which does help with traffic relief, isn't included in that. This is for the Traffic and Congestion Management Plan that the Traffic Engineering Group has been working on, to then identify capital improvement projects, such as adding a lane on East Fist Way, those types of things. I don't have the specific numbers, but it is more than $650,000. And you will see that with the capital improvement program budget, that will come before you next month as well.
Okay, see no more comments. I'd just like to thank staff, thank you for all the work on the budget, and we look forward to seeing the new draft budget, that'll be coming to us when, end of May or so?
We, so, our plan is to bring the draft budget to you at the second meeting in May, and then a final budget for approval in June. If you don't have any other questions or comments, we thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thanks both of you for being here, and thanks for all the work that you do to, I know it takes a long time to get a budget together and to work on, you work on it all the time, so we appreciate all of your work. Okay, so with that, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is D2, and it's, this is Councilwoman, this is Deputy Mayor Aguilaris, and this is the Regulation of Taxicabs. This is kind of an interesting thing. Interesting item.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just bringing this to the council so that we can discuss, the main ask from the taxicab companies is that we lower our insurance rates, our insurance requirement, I should say. Back in 2011, we raised it to $1 million for taxicab companies to operate in the City of Vista. And basically, at that time, we were following the county and every other city, basically, who had raised their rates. Since then, there's been a lot of changes in the business models of getting around our city, and throughout the state, actually, with the introduction of TNCs, or companies like Uber, Lyft, Bounce, those companies. And a lot of those companies operate here in our city, but the issue is getting to the point where taxicab companies are not playing on an even playing field with the Ubers and the Lyfts, because the requirements are a lot different, for a lot of different, like, vehicle inspections, and getting licensed in a city, and that. So, their main ask from the taxicab companies is if we could just basically match what other cities in the State of California, in the county, are starting to do. The City of San Diego just recently lowered their insurance requirements down to $350,000. They're asking that we do the same, and that, in order for them to survive. So, the information I received from them, specific to North County, is that they have cut the number of taxicabs in half that are servicing all of North County, in order just to basically stay in business, because their business has been cut into so much. And, you know, I know that times have changed. I personally have used Uber myself, many times, and it is a very, it is a very convenient service, but I do have issues, actually, with, you know, the choices that, or a choice being eliminated, like taxicabs, because I know there are other people in our community, like we were talking about, seniors and that, who probably wouldn't use an Uber or a Lyft. You know, some would, but a lot won't, because they feel safer in a taxicab. And I know personally, I've witnessed crimes being committed by Uber and Lyft drivers in their cars, with the stickers and that, and, you know, so I think people need to have that safe choice. The background checks that Uber and Lyft do are different. I'm not saying they're bad or less, but they're definitely different than what the cab drivers are required to do. So, there's just a lot of unevenness that the cabbies are, on their competition with Uber and Lyft, and they're just looking to try to find a way to help even that out and lower their costs to do business in the City of Vista. So, they're not asking to not be licensed and not meet the inspection requirements and that, that are required by the county, but they are looking to at least get their insurance downs, that would make them a lot more competitive, at least allow, basically allow them to stay in business. In addition to that, I would also like to discuss the idea of either a JPA being set up for taxicabs, either through the cities getting together, or putting it to some other agency, like NCTD, North County Transit District, because there is a bill that was passed, AB 1069, that is requiring that taxicabs be regulated by some agency, and that's either requiring to set up the JPA, or using some sort of an agency that's already established, like North County Transit District, to regulate. And I'd like to hear your opinions on that, and what we should do with that. That's something that has to happen. The other option is for them to be regulated by MTS in San Diego. So, anyhow, I would like to hear from my fellow council members on, and their opinions on this, and see if we can come to consensus, number one, on the insurance requirement for the City of Vista, and, number two, what to do about either establishing a JPA or not establishing a JPA for North County.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I have a couple of questions for you on this. Do we have any taxicab companies operating out of the City of Vista?
Not out of the City of Vista, but operating in the City of Vista, yes.
But none of them are headquartered here?
No, the one that, Yellow Cab is, I believe, headquartered out of Oceanside.
Okay. Aside from the background checks that you talked about, that Uber and Lyft perhaps don't do as deep a dive on backgrounds as taxicabs do, how else are they differentiated between, or from, the Uber and Lyft-type business model?
Well, there is licensing in each city that they operate in, so they have to be licensed. In addition to that, there is an inspection that each vehicle has to go through, that right now is being handled here in North County by the sheriff, and I believe in some other cities, I think, like San Diego, there is being handled through MTS.
Are you looking to do the same type of regulation on Uber, Lyft, or any of the services like that?
I don't know that we can, but as I was, I mean, it's a good question, because I was, as I was reading our chapter 5.8 of Taxicabs, the 5.801A says, "Without first having obtained the permit required by this chapter, it shall be unlawful for a person to carry on business utilizing taxicabs or jitneys within the city." So, jitney is a pretty old term. I had to look it up, to be honest, but it's essentially what Uber is doing. In fact, I can't remember his name, but the CEO of Uber, the former CEO of Uber, actually referred to Uber as a jitney, and actually used the jitney history that got eliminated in the earlier century by overregulation. They were basically jitneys, were taking over taxicabs, and so, the taxicabbies went ahead and set up some, basically got their legislators to regulate the jitneys and run them out of business, because they were competition. So, by overregulating, so now, it's kind of like the reverse.
Right.
So, now the jitneys are underregulated, and cabs are overregulated, and they're getting run out of business.
So, what are the state rules regarding, if any, the amount of insurance that taxicabs have to have? I'm sure, it's California, they have a rule for everything.
Well, I don't know what the state rule is, because what I've seen, and I think you were provided with information here, you'll see that many cities have very different rates, anywhere from $300,000. There are a couple of cities that still have $1 million, which is like Oakland, San Francisco, but even Los Angeles has lowered to 350. The City of San Diego, which I included in your information here, has recently lowered their amount to 350.
Right.
So, I'm not really sure what... So, I'm not really sure what the state requirement is. I'm guessing it's probably $100,000 like anybody else.
The information was on the counter when we got here, so no, I haven't had time to read it before the council meeting.
I understand, yeah.
So, I ask these questions because I am not in favor of more regulations over businesses. And your choice of words that taxicabs are being eliminated from choice, and you hate to see that happen, if that's their business model that they're not able to sustain their business, then they perhaps need to revise their business model to be more competitive. So, I would have to, I would have to know more information and have some of these questions answered before I could, before I could talk about how we want to add more regulation to taxicab businesses versus any regulation to these other businesses. And I would want to know, $1 million is a lot of money, and I'm sure that when that was decided, there was reasoning behind it. So, I'd want to know what that was, and I'm happy to hear what the reasoning is to lower it. I'm all for lowering it. I'm all for doing what we can to help businesses be more competitive. I don't want to overburden them, but on the other hand, I want to know what was the justification to do it in the first place. And then the other thing you were talking about was a JPA. I'm not sure, again, adding another government agency to oversee private businesses is something that we want to do, or it's not something that I would want to do. So, I would not be in favor of looking at a JPA at this point, and certainly not with this little amount of information.
So, yeah, let me, no, that's all right. Let me clarify. I'm actually talking about less regulation, I guess, for taxicabs, not more regulation. Talking really just about lowering their insurance. It's not really regulating.
JPA to oversee things.
That's not my idea. That's, that's the State of California's law. AB 1069 is requiring that the taxicabs have some agency oversee them, which would be either a new JPA, which I'm not exactly in favor of either, or using a transit agency to regulate them. So, that's, those are the only two choices.
Would it be possible to have staff come back with a complete overview of AB 1069, what the taxicab rules are statewide, countywide, that we're looking at? And what are the rules for Uber and Lyft and those companies and the differences in the business models? There's just more information that's to be had here before we can make these decisions.
That's the direction we can do that. AB 1069 was intending, I believe, to streamline for taxicabs because most cities have their own rules. In San Diego, they're fairly streamlined. The City of Vista doesn't regulate any company specifically because there is none that's based in Vista, so we've been adopting the county code by ordnance or by reference for years and years and years, so when they change their rates, we change our rates. AB 1069 says, "No, no, no, you, all the cities can't have their own rules. You either need to do it through the transportation agencies, or you guys need to consolidate into a JPA and regulate it as one entity so that they don't have to go to all these different places." What I don't know is much about the other carrier, the other transportation companies, and so we can bring that information back.
Include a copy of AB 1069 in your handout? Because I would, I would want to read the bill to see what it says and how we'd have to do it. So, I'm not opposed to having this conversation, I just need more information.
That's why I brought it to the council, so we could discuss it.
Yeah. Councilor Franklin.
From my discussions, it seems as if there are two fairly separate issues. One is that the taxicab operators have asked for some relief on the insurance requirement that we increased in 2011, and then the separate issue, which perhaps we could handle separately, is the issue of, so the state law requires, because the city under the state law had regulatory authority, and the state law has removed that regulatory authority and said that we had to delegate our authority to a joint powers authority or to the county, is that right?
Transit agency.
Transit agency, okay. You know, what's a shame is that NCTD is a competitor in a way, not a direct competitor, but they're competing for, you know, transportation dollars. So, they, it's not that they don't have a stake in the game. I don't know that that necessarily means they can't do it fairly. I don't, what is the cost involved with creating a JPA, just filing the paperwork and making that a reality? What kind of administrative burden do we have? Is, am I right, there's, how many, how many cars are licensed to operate in the City of Vista right now? How many taxicabs, individual cabs are medallioned in the city? Do we know?
Not sure the exact number, but Yellow Cab, all their cabs are allowed to come into Vista? I don't know how many they have, but if it was six or if it was 10, they could all come into Vista?
I met with the owner about an hour ago. He said he has got 50 cars, so I would assume he's got them all licensed in Vista, or maybe he's got a handful of them. So, there's a really small number of cars. If we start trying to heap the cost of regulation from a JPA after we spend $50,000 in, you know, attorney's fees, do we do this internally or do we hire outside counsel to file the paperwork, create this JPA?
Typically, we would create that internally, but it has to be staffed, and somebody has to do all of the work of the regulatory operation. So, it's hard to say what the actual cost would be, but it would not be zero.
Well, somebody at the City of Vista is already performing this duty, according to our current ordinance.
Well, currently, we have the, as Ms. Zimmerman mentioned, we adopt the county code by reference.
Oh, okay.
So, while we issue them a license to operate in the city, the county actually does the inspections and the permitting and the regulatory.
So, does that mean as long as they have their county permit and they automatically get a city medallion? Is that the idea?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, and is the county going to continue to provide its, its service?
My understanding is...
Oh, yes.
I don't believe they're allowed, they can, they're still able to provide it?
They're able to be contracted by whatever agency or JPA is established.
And so, is the county right now doing its regulatory, its regulation through MTS?
No.
Okay. But the county of San Diego is thinking about eliminating this and transferring it to MTS? What's...
I think they have to. They have to. It's either MTS and North County Transit or a separate JPA.
They're in the same boat as us.
Yeah.
Okay.
The MTS is already doing it for South County and has been.
Okay. Well, I, so we've got 50 cabs. I mean, how many cabs did we once have operating in Vista? I'm guessing it must have been 200.
Going back, I think we had three or four cab companies, you know, let's say 20 years ago.
Must have been hundreds of cabs, right?
I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, but it's certainly, I mean, I haven't taken a cab in, I don't know how long, and probably don't ever intend to take another cab so long as I live. However, however, government ought not place any burden upon one business operator, make any distinction between their model of business, just because they're telephone dispatched and not internet application dispatched, doesn't mean that we should heap some different regulation on them. So, I mean, I believe that everybody competing in the same business ought to bear the same regulatory burden. So, transitioning to the next issue about the insurance requirement, what were our insurance requirements prior to increasing it to $1 million in 2011? And was that just a change to conform with a new county requirement?
Yeah, that's because the, that's the county's rules, the $1 million.
And what were the rules prior to 2011? Do you remember, Ms. Zimmerman?
I don't have that information.
300.
It might have been 300, but when the county changed theirs, we updated our rules, and it's consistent with North County at the moment with all the other North County cities.
They're all at $1 million?
Currently.
Is that because most of them delegate their authority to the county?
It's very possible.
Yeah, okay.
Could I say something to that? My understanding is the Oceanside and Escondido are both considering lowering to 350 as well. I don't know about San Marcos, but I know Oceanside and Escondido are considering that.
Yeah.
They're in the same boat. They're just hearing about this from probably the same person, so I think everybody's dealing with this at once.
Right. It's a fair, it's a fair request because if Uber and Lyft, which probably have 93% market share between them, don't have the same requirements, then why should the cab? Yeah, the only, the only thing about the business model for the taxicab, it's very, very different than the model for the rideshare services, is that I have a record of who, in what car, and their license number, their driver's license number, their identity. Every time I take a ride, I know, I can, I can go find that driver again if something goes wrong in a taxicab. I don't know if that's even germane to the insurance question, but, you know, taxicab is an anonymous service where, you know, if you didn't write down the driver's license number and name and license plate, then you're never going to find them again. If you lost your wallet in the car, you're kind of out of luck. So, I'm amenable. Sounds like we do need to do some more research here, but I want to create a level playing field for businesses in the same industry. So, I don't know if we need to make the change today, but I'm definitely amenable to doing the further research to, I don't want to put the last operator out of business and then, you know, quash the taxicab industry altogether because they may yet reinvent themselves and develop some better way to compete. They should have that privilege and ability. It should be on the same playing field as every other business. So, that's my thought.
Deputy Mayor, if I could ask a question. Do you know, from your involvement with NCTD, are they willing to take on this role like MTS is for South County?
So, we have not discussed it officially at NCTD. So, this is going to come before the board on April 18th or 19th, whatever that day is. It's the third Thursday of the month, so it is going to be discussed, you know. I know staff there feels like any other staff, they don't really want it, but there's obviously a requirement, and they're going to wait to hear from their elected officials to see if it's something that they want to pursue. So, City of Oceanside sits on NCTD, Escondido, San Marcos, Carlsbad, all the North Counties. So, we will have that discussion and decide which direction we'd like to go.
And if, and if NCTD doesn't want to take on that role, is, do you know if MTS is willing to take on the role for the North County cities?
I understand that MTS is eager to take on that role, and that, to be honest, since it's out there, concerns me.
Councilor Green.
All right. Crazy. I agree with Councilmember Franklin. I think everything that he said was pretty on point. I also agree that if they're going to be lowering the insurance regulations across the board, we should do that. I've heard the word "taxicab" more tonight than I have in the past five years, so that's saying something. Taxi cab awareness night. But I really don't think that there's any use in the city forming a JPA for the taxicab industry right now. I just don't think it's really a high priority, high, I mean, we have more Starbucks in Vista almost, I would say, than we have taxicabs driving through, so might as well do a coffee JPA. But I would welcome MTS handling it. I do like the idea of North County Transit District handling it if they would, just because I do think North County should be in control of those North County funds, but I wouldn't want to do like a, hey, let's us and Oceanside and Escondido start the taxicab JPA or whatever, but I definitely want to make sure that, you know, insurance is in the same ballpark as everybody else, and if it's at 350, I'm good with it, and then hopefully they can find a way to be regulated per the, you know, what was it, the AB 1069, another law that Sacramento just made up and said, figure out how to follow it. So, so no, I'm okay with the insurance, but like I said, I don't think there's a whole lot of point in wasting too much time from a city standpoint, especially with not even having a taxicab company that's like big and generating revenue for our city. So, I don't want to spend too much focus on the JPA per se, but definitely fine with hooking up the insurance requirements.
Councilor Rigby.
Thank you.
I accidentally erased you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of follow-up questions, and the city manager actually had a couple of them that were on my list. But going back to, I want to touch on both the JPA and the insurance again. So, when the cities increased it from 300,000, I think you said it was, and then they went straight from 300,000 to 1 million, my question, I guess, is for the city attorney, actually. If we have to regulate what they have to have for insurance, I'm assuming that we still have no liability, like if they don't have the right amount of insurance, of insurance or some accident costs $2 million, there's nothing that's coming back to the city because they're, they have a medallion or they're, they're following city rules. There's no liability for a city on that, right? Just like in our private insurance, there's no, it's nothing back on them. So, that was, that, I guess, was my question on that. Then the other thing, Deputy Mayor, you had said before and also in response to the city manager's question on MTS taking it on or the NCTD taking it on, and if, and if all the North County cities already serve on the NCTD, it doesn't make sense to me to form a separate JPA with all the same people at the table, and that's kind of NCTD's job is to work on North County transportation issues. So, if, I would say, go there. But if they didn't want to do it, and I think as a member agency, I'd want to have that conversation with them as to why they don't want to do it, what is your opposition to MTS doing it because you made the comment that that concerns you?
Yeah, that comment was really, so I sit on the board for North County Transit District, and MTS is eager to take over whatever services they can in North County. But, you know, I know the operators, both South County cabbies and our North County company, neither one of them really wants to be under MTS. So, I'm not exactly sure what the, I have no opinion on why, but there is some kind of reluctance to be regulated by MTS. They do their, MTS does the actual inspection, so I don't know if there's a reason for that or if it's, I'm not sure. So, the reason I brought this up is because we have this meeting at NCTD coming up in a couple of weeks, and I want to know where you guys stand so that I can have an informed opinion and have an idea. It sounds like nobody's in favor of doing a JPA, which I'm fine with as well and agree on.
I'm fine with the insurance. I actually agree with, I almost called you deputy mayor. Say, I told you, it takes a year to catch up. With Councilwoman Franklin. And if there's nothing on our end that we are, have any liability on, then if they're fine with the lowering it back down, I'm fine with that as well, but not the JPA.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's fine with me, too. That's why I brought it, brought it to your attention.
Well, Councilor Franklin, I want to talk again, but go ahead.
Just real quick, this is kind of interesting and probably would tell us why we need to do our homework on this. The gentleman with the taxicab company provided me this comparison of liability requirements for other cities, but it also lays out that the California Public Utilities Code requires Uber and Lyft to maintain a $1 million coverage during transportation of a passenger or on their way to pick up a passenger. The limits are lower while they're using their vehicle for personal use or the application has not been engaged, but we probably need to...
Like if, like if they're waiting for a ride?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, what I would liken this to, it says app closed, personal use, that's when the cabbie's on personal use in his vehicle. When his app is open, that's when his light's on. When his match accepted prior to pickup, that's when he's gotten a radio call to go pick somebody up. And during transport, that's when he's got a passenger. I mean, if Uber and Lyft, and this, this says, according to California law, Uber and Lyft are $1 million during passenger transport. So, again, talking about keeping the playing field level, I, maybe we don't understand what we've got in front of us, but we better do our research and, you know, try and make it, make it level.
Can we bring this back to further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, and I'd like to know also when he meets with NCTD if they would be willing to take that on. And I understand why the taxicabs wouldn't want to drive to San Diego to get their inspections or, I don't know how often they have to have those, but to deal with them and, you know, a trip to San Diego, especially if, you know, all of our, like if Escondido and the other cities, if we could all be together through North County Transit, that would be the ideal thing, especially since the AB 1069 says there's only two ways that they can, they can operate, and one is the JPA or a transit agency. Those are the only two options. There are no other options. So, I would, I would like to listen, come back after you have a meeting with them and see what they, what they think. That would be my thing.
Sounds good.
I support the insurance. I think that's fine.
Thank you.
So, with that, I guess with that, we have enough information. So, we will go from there. We have oral communications, and we have, we have 12 speakers. We have Oral Communications and we have, we have 12 speakers for Oral Communications. So we will start and you each have three minutes. We won't be, no clapping, we're not going to be clapping, and we're going to time you. And if you would, I'll call one name and then if you, if the other person, I'll call two more names, if you'd line up over here on the side so that we can move you through quickly, that would be very much appreciated. So we're going to start with James Stockrad, and then we're going to follow by Nikki Leeds and followed by James Wang.
Number one tonight. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here tonight to ask your help in reviewing the Planning Commission's April 1st decision to approve a car wash at 1350 South Melrose Drive. The car wash is not needed in this area. We have many other car washes in the City of Vista and along Melrose Drive as it is. I conducted a poll on a neighborhood social media app of Vista residents. As of this evening, we had 109 people responding. Seventy-nine percent of those people do not want this car wash. Main reason was the oversaturation of car washes in the area along South Melrose Drive as it is. But other reasons were, if you go on Yelp, this company is an out-of-state company trying to move into California, they have so many negative reviews from customers in other states. Reviews from credit cards being overcharged at their automated pay stations, vehicles being damaged by the wash's equipment, the wash not being opened during scheduled hours. Many of their car washes have closed for various reasons, one can only imagine. There's just a lot of negative reviews about this company. And is this a company we want in our City of Vista? Other reasons, basically, the area around it is designated as semi-rural land from the county of San Diego. The car wash will not fit with this. The, the landowners in this area have horses, they have fruit farms, agricultural nurseries. A car wash just doesn't fit. Other concerns are traffic. The Planning Commission approved this car wash without adding even a right turn lane into the car wash from northbound Melrose. The lane that you'll be turning into this car wash from the northbound is also the right lane that goes up to Sunset Drive. Peak times of the day, that road is packed. When there is less traffic, the posted speed limit is 45, but we all know that drive Melrose on a regular basis, 45 is not the speed limit that's, the vehicles are traveling, they're traveling much higher. Exiting the car wash, there is no southbound way to get, get across Melrose. You have to go across the lanes of traffic into the left lane, go up to Sunset and make a U-turn. So when traffic is barreling down Melrose, people are going to have to cut across all lanes, and I foresee a lot of injury accidents occurring. We already have a lot of injury accidents along Melrose as it is. Also, the noise on the area, as this is a semi-rural area, it's a fairly quiet area. The car wash with its dryers running from the, the wash itself, they have 41 vacuums outside of the car wash that will be running, probably not all at once, but, you know, fairly regularly. So I just, I would like the council to review the Planning Commission's decision from their April 1st meeting and let's have a talk about this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nikki Leeds, followed by James Wang, followed by Merrill Leeds. You're switch orders? Okay. So you're James, right?
Correct. Good evening, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk with you tonight. So I want to ask you to consider a win-win idea for distributing straws, asking restaurants to distribute straws only on request rather than by default. So it's win-win because there are no losers in this. It's not a ban, it's a choice. So everyone's a winner. So customers get a choice whether they get a straw or not. Often they don't. So it's kind of like, like junk mail. I mean, you get junk mail whether you want it or not. Most of it goes in the trash, right? So same thing happens with straws. But sometimes you want, you do want some coupon or something, so have a choice. So again, it's, it's a choice, not a ban. So restaurants save because they distribute fewer straws. So like the National Park Service estimates that, that Americans use 1.6 straws per day per person. I know you guys don't, I don't know where they got the number, but 1.6. So City of Vista, that'd be 160,000 straws per day. Incredible, right? Now, even straws only cost one-tenth of a cent each, that's $160 a day. In a year, that's $58,000. So restaurants could save quite a bit of money just by saving straws. And then the city saves too, because it reduces the litter. You know, you don't have to pick up the litter and people don't have to look at it. So I'm asking you to consider, consider this and get on board with other cities who are doing it, it's just starting. So San Francisco does it, Davis does it, Malibu does it, SNEES just passed it last month. So consider it's just like the ban on smoking outside your city hall, you know? So Sacramento started doing that, and then other cities started doing it. So now everyone does it. So I'm asking if Vista would please be at the forefront and be a leader in this decision rather than being a follower. So please consider it. It's win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Leeds, followed by Merrill Leeds, followed by Jared Leeds.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so why do we talk about straws on request? Simple. Most people don't need a straw to drink, and why not request one if you do? This simple voluntary request of asking for a straw when needed will be an easy step toward being mindful stewards of our oceans and landfills. By 2050, there will be more plastic in the ocean than sea life, and this is avoidable. Straws on request is a low-impact way to help keep that from happening. Why be wasteful when you don't have to, right? We raise our children to recycle, reuse, and be mindful of our impact on the environment. I remember growing up and becoming aware of recycling and reducing waste. I remember when my mom told us to sort the recyclables in different waste bins and how important it was for the health of our planet. I remember her making it fun and easy to sort the paper, the cans, the glass, and then the plastics. She made me aware of how my actions mattered. Today, I sort all of our family's trash and don't think twice about it. My consciousness shifted painlessly, and now recycling and reusing is part of our social consciousness. Straws on request is one of those painless steps we can take to change our habits and will have a huge impact in a very immediate and measurable way. I remember when water on request at restaurants was implemented as a response to the droughts. I remember when hotels provided replacement towels on request to save on water. Plastic straws don't biodegrade, and this is really, really, really bad. So why not make a simple and easy change? Asking our city food establishments to make straws on request saves them money and helps all of us. This is a win-win for all. If you want a straw, you can go get one. And if you don't, then you won't. It's that easy. Let's do it. Thanks.
Merrill Leeds, followed by Jared Leeds, followed by Janice Jones.
Thank you, Vista council, councilmembers and Mayor Ritter for allowing the citizens of our community to speak in this public forum. How often does an opportunity present itself to establish legislation that has no downsides? I am here to ask the City of Vista to implement a straws-on-request ordinance. As of this date, cities across America, including Seattle, Davis, San Luis Obispo, Manhattan Beach, San Francisco, and Malibu have already enacted or are in the process of adopting laws that will limit the proliferation of plastic-drinking straws by requiring eating establishments to provide them only when requested by a customer. Countless other jurisdictions throughout the world are considering or have already approved similar ordinances. Even major corporations are now voluntarily enacting policies that go well beyond this low-impact, common-sense statute. This straightforward policy provides only benefits and no downsides. One, there would be zero fiscal impact to the City of Vista. Two, money will be saved by food service businesses by purchasing and providing less straws, leading to, three, lower food costs to consumers as a result of money saved by restaurants. Number four, reduced costs would be required for cleanup of discarded plastic straws. And number five, a heightened awareness of the importance for all of us to collectively contribute toward conserving resources and reducing waste. As a representation of the enormous groundswell of enthusiasm in favor of this proposed legislation, we have with us here tonight the support of many concerned citizens and environmental advocates, including Encinita's Environmental Commissioner, James Wang, who recently introduced a straws-on-request ordinance, which has been unanimously approved by the Encinita City Council. In this crucial election year, we, the citizens, are speaking out on what is truly important to us. We appreciate you lending your ears to our voices and urge you to move forward on enacting straws-on-request. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Leeds, followed by Janice Jones, followed by Damian Johnson.
As a high school student and concerned member of our community, I'd like to express the urgency of a straw-on-request ordinance. It's disheartening to recognize pollution on a global scale every day, but what's more upsetting is the minimal action being done to prevent such consequences. In requesting straws at restaurants locally, we will be taking a significant step toward a pollution-free and environmentally sound world. Being a young person, I hope for a brighter, cleaner future for my own generation and the many generations to come. This is a small act that can and will make a huge difference, and I have full faith that our city council will champion this proposal to make the City of Vista a cleaner and unpolluted place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Jones, followed by Damian Johnson, followed by Grace Rapp.
Hi, I'm Janice, and I've lived in Vista for the past 25 years. I'm an educator and an artist. Thank you for your support of the public arts in Vista. Actually, the Kites Over Vista installation that's in front of the wave is one of my pieces. If you've driven past it, you've noticed the colorful pieces attached to the scaffolding. What you might not have noticed is that all that color comes from marine debris, plastic that I've picked up off the beaches locally here in North County. And the piece was made to bring awareness to the problem of plastic pollution and the devastation that's going on in our oceans because of what we're doing in, on land. I clean the beach regularly, often obsessively, which is how I got enough plastic to make that piece. And in one beach clean alone, my record is 150 straws. I don't always find that many, but every time I go to the beach and clean, I find a handful. I also participate in Only Loser's Litters, Only Loser's Litter Neighborhood Cleanups. And I believe that keeping straws off of our streets in Vista not only makes our city a cleaner, more beautiful place, but it also impacts the ocean life and the ocean ecosystem because everything we drop on the ground here eventually will end up in the ocean through the storm drains and the waterways. In fact, 80% of marine debris comes from land-based sources, and it could be much further inland than even Vista that it's coming through the waterways to the ocean. So straws-on-request is a very simple, very baby step toward solving this problem. As somebody else says, it would raise awareness, make people think more about their use of single-use plastics, with a huge positive impact and really zero negative impact on the businesses and the individuals who would still have every opportunity to use a straw if they needed one. So please consider talking, discussing, further discussions about straws-on-request. And I appreciate Councilman, Councilmember Green, the opportunity to go to EDCO with you later this month. I look forward to learning about the system that we have in place here in North County to recycle more and be green in our environment. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Damian Johnson, followed by Grace Rapp, followed by Kristen Carter.
Hello, my name is Damian Johnson. I run a skilled nursing facility here in North County. I'm the father of, of five children. As a father, I think that the parents of Vista would be very concerned that the city council be writing and supporting a ballot initiative that will indicate that you're okay with commercial marijuana businesses, like stores, manufacturing, and cultivation. Unfortunately, this is probably not your intent. However, since the city council and your staff will be writing the ballot initiative language, you will be stating the reasons why you, the city council, want these businesses, and you will have to sign the pro arguments. Meanwhile, there will likely be parents who will write the opposition arguments, and will have leading Vista citizens sign the opposing ballot statements, perhaps calling into question your dedication to the youth of Vista and the public safety and welfare of the city. Aligning yourself with pro-pot business sentiments will be a most unfortunate example to youth and families. I don't think defending yourself as just trying to compete with the ballot initiative already on the ballot is going to work. Probably the same parents will write the opposing arguments for this ballot measure as well. I would guess that one of the arguments that these parents will, will make in these two ballot measures is that it will be out-of-towners who want to make money from pot directly or by diversion. Again, your motives may be called into question, which is not what anyone wants. The areas of the city where these enterprises locate won't be safer or cleaner or appealing or smell better. They will not improve the, the quality of life for, for anyone. The main goal of any government entity should be the safety and the welfare of its citizens, and these enterprises are contrary to these civic goals. I don't think it's the city's appropriate responsibility to enable this money-making activity over the other businesses that would make the citizens proud. Let the citizens make their own decision and vote on the one ballot initiative, which is so outrageous, they will defeat it. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Rapp, followed by Kristen Carter, followed by Diane Casey.
My name is Grace Rapp. I'm a ninth grader, and I'm on the water polo and swim team for my high school as well as, as well as other clubs. I'm very confused and about what the city council is promoting. I don't understand why you wouldn't just let citizens vote on the one marijuana measure that is already on the ballot instead of writing another similar ballot measure. No one wants marijuana businesses all over town. Teens look to our elected city council persons and model what are healthy and wise decisions. And the decision to write your own ballot measure to bring marijuana businesses to Vista is puzzling. It seems like you're okay with marijuana, and since marijuana always makes its way to teens on our campus from 18 years old and other adults, we don't need the city council to condone that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kristen Carter, followed by Diane Casey, followed by, oh. Is it Renee? Is there Benjamin?
Okay.
You go ahead.
I guess it's my cue. Good evening. I am thankful to see all of you in good health and hope you're having a good evening. I'm not going to put too many facts. I'm going to keep it short and sweet because I know they gave all the facts, I don't want to repeat it. I just want to say I'm just like any other family. I come from a military family. I'm an Oceanside resident, but I work here in Vista, so I'm here all the time. And I'm also trying to support this straw-on-request ordinance because most straws are made out of type V plastics, which is polypropylene. It's, can be recycled, but a lot of the small businesses here in Vista that are small recycling businesses don't accept them as recycled plastic, and because of that, a lot of the plastic straws end up in streets, landfills, and sometimes our oceans. You can look up all the statistics that you want. There's a lot of straws that are found in the bellies of seagulls and sea life, and regardless of your political affiliation, your belief in how we are doing in terms of sustainability, we can all agree that we're not exactly going at a positive rate of change for how we're doing sustainability and our eco-health. And at this point in time, with cities like Malibu and Seattle, at this point, it's kind of, do you want to be the city council that's, you know, trying to help in this push to be ahead of the power curve or behind it? And for the ecosystem, for the people of this city and for other cities to see us as another peer on all the different cities that are in California, I think we should go for the straw upon ordinance, uh, straw upon request ordinance. So, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks. Diane Casey? Is it, is it Diane? No.
Excuse my horrible handwriting. I swear I should be a doctor, but I'm not. My name's Ryan Casey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's my terrible handwriting.
I'm having trouble reading today either. So followed by Benjamin and followed by Scott Priest.
Hello, city council. My name is Ryan Casey. I am a worker here at the City of Vista, recently hired as a lifeguard over at the Wave. I am a student at Cal State San Marcos and represent the Ocean Conservation Club. Rather than continue Rather than continue to elongate the points that have been made by constituents and friends here, I would like to point to the enemy here that we are talking about, which is plastic straws. The various processes that are used to make plastic straws actually exacerbate the times that these straws linger within the ocean. But more importantly and considered to you is the ARC GIS data that has been seen over Vista. Vista has a very specific water system that continues to push further and further watershed down towards the oceans. It's a very specific geography that comes with being so inland that it causes a lot more water drainage, but close enough to the coast where more plastic straws are able to get into the ocean than in any other place like it. For instance, according to the American Water Resources Association, in a study called "The Role of Headwater Streams and Downstream Water Quality" by Richard B. Alexander, it notes that watershed along inland areas is the main culprit of pollutants such as plastic straws entering the ocean. As Vista, the analysis of ARC GIS data collection is indeed a part of that inland flow, it is integral to the survival of our oceans and our marine life that we take a hold of these kind of processes and ordinances and get ahead of them from the start, rather than waiting for a longer time period in order to enact them. But more importantly was a point that my friend Kristen Carter noted on, which is small businesses. The process of plastic compounding, straw extrusion, special operations featuring thermo couplers, all add to the cost of the creation of these straws. It's a very time and energy-consuming process to make these straws. Yet 500 million Americans every year, according to the NOAA, use plastic straws, and at the very least, 2/3 of these straws end up in our oceans. That means that small businesses, every year, are accruing the cost of these straws. Large businesses are already taking the steps to remove it, not just because of the morality of the issue, but because it's honestly causing them to cost more for their production. Think about it. The small, little particles that keep going into the ocean and give them a bad image are also costing them hundreds of thousands of dollars a year just because there is a habitual notion that waitresses and waiters should be giving you straws. But in the most part, most citizens would not even think to ask for a plastic straw. They're not that sanitary. They're not that needed. And honestly, they're a waste put upon small businesses and making it harder for them to compete. Ms. Riggsby, I saw that you were talking about, during the taxi bill, you were talking about competition. Well, if we're going to be able to see these businesses, such as Lyft and such, go to their full potential, why shouldn't restaurants also have the same ability to do so? Straws are a hindrance to competition. And so as a result, I feel that we need to be getting rid of these plastic straws as soon as possible. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you. Is there Benjamin? Yes, okay. Followed by Scott Priest, followed by Carl Hughes.
Hello, city council members. So my name is Benjamin, and I'm a ninth grader at Mission Vista High School, and I'm also on my school's golf team and part of the Mission Vista Steel Drum Ensemble. So when I watch the news, it seems like all the good stuff about Vista is being talked about. But recently, I've heard about gangs and shootings and the illegal, especially the illegal marijuana stores that don't, that won't go away because it's too rewarding and the penalties too insignificant. Teenagers want to be proud of their city. I think the city should work harder to get rid of illegal marijuana stores, instead suggesting that you want them by writing, by writing something that would be on the ballot in November, placing marijuana stores and farms. I heard on the news that California is described as a source state for marijuana across the United States. I guess that means that California marijuana farms are the source of pot being sent outside of the state and perhaps outside the country. So I have a question. What could possibly be gained by this Vista City Council and its staff and the sheriff in being part of this extra pot production that may end up in cities outside California that don't want it? To me, this seems very disrespectful to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Scott Priest, followed by Carl Hughes.
He's a good kid. We had to drive pretty quick to get here after golf practice. He's one of my three kids that attend Vista Unified School Districts. Lieutenant Roosevelt Middle School was a principal award winner, which means he never received an A- in any class in all three years while attending Roosevelt. He'll be getting his Eagle Scout later in the year. So we're all for the straw thing. Leave no trace, as they say in Scouts. But I'm here on behalf of my wife, who's a schoolteacher. Our three kids, as I mentioned, attend schools in the Vista Unified School District. My brother-in-law works as a teacher in Vista Unified, and we have a brother and sister-in-law whose teenage kids also attend schools. So we talk a lot about the city and what's going on at Sunday dinner. We also talk about the decisions that parents make and adults make and how those decisions affect our youth. If the city council is interested in protecting patients' rights with regards to marijuana, we need to remember that many pot is already protected, and patients and caregivers can grow, they can exchange, and there's really no city regulations that are required or necessary. So I don't understand why there was a rush to commercialize pot businesses in the city of Vista. You're going to bring normalization with regards to advertising. We already had the issue with the sign, "Paseo de Vista," right? And then we added Vista on the bottom, right? Now, let's just add pot signs everywhere and sign twirlers, and it's just going to make, you think that sign was an issue, just think about the other signs that'll be an issue. I would sing "Sign, Sign, Everywhere is Sign," but I'm not, I'm not a good lyricist. Our family likes, others received the Vista Unified School District Student Services Bulletin back in mid-December. I imagine everyone on this council has read that. If you haven't, I highly recommend you do so. We were very moved by its appeals to families to partner with the city and their students with regards to marijuana use on campuses. And I don't understand why the city is not being a partner themselves with Vista Unified School District in trying to help to basically surge marijuana onto campuses with regards to the passing of the recent election. I respectfully suggest that the city of Vista be partners with the Vista Unified School District with parents and students that don't want marijuana on their campus and join the fight and the egregious ballot initiative from pot profiteers that are trying to benefit and gain money. So I thank you for your time tonight, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Carl Hughes.
I have an actual presentation today. I made it before, actually, yesterday. Is that the clicker over there? So let's see if it works. Oh, on, okay. Okay, let's see. All right. Hello, city council. Today, I'm going to talk about CBD oil. Well, it was actually a specific location I wanted to talk about, but I don't want to get sued. All right, so, well, I didn't say what location this is, but somewhere in Vista, they're serving up CBD oil and drinks. And as you can see to the right, this sign, you can get $2 hemp CBD oil. And look at how many things that this CBD oil is supposed to do. It's non-psychoactive, it boosts immunity, it's antipsychotic, it reduces nausea, the list goes on and on. I didn't know that a coffee shop was like a doctor. I didn't realize that they knew all of this. And so this is the DEA New Drug Code, which states that CBD is actually from the part of the marijuana plant that is under the Controlled Substances Act. But they did say that there might actually be CBD in like hemp. However, the amounts would be like trace amounts, so it wouldn't even matter to the businesses to actually extract the CBD from the hemp. So I was wondering whether or not that drink was either a Schedule I substance or there was no actual CBD oil in it. So what they say about hemp, the DEA released something in, I think, the Federal Register, was in 2001. But what they say is that all parts of the plant, even hemp, have THC in it. They're found like trace amounts. And so what they said was that if hemp has THC in it, and it's going into your body through food and drinks, it's against the law. It falls within the Controlled Substances Act. And so, oh, this is great. So the FDA made an announcement on these CBD products, and it says, "Selling these unapproved products with unsubstantiated therapeutic claims is not only a violation of the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, but also can put patients at risk as these products have not been proven to be safe or effective." And we don't let companies market products that deliberately prey on sick people, so the people with cancer and epilepsy, with baseless claims that their substance can shrink or cure cancer, and we're not going to look the other way, forcing these principles when it comes to marijuana-containing products. So CBD oil, they're doing a lot of research, but so far, there hasn't been really a definite approval by the FDA. And so because the FDA hasn't approved it, we don't know what we're giving to the patients. And so I'm wondering about the people that say "safe access" to the patients, medical marijuana. If this hasn't been approved by the FDA, then how is it really safe? We're really relying on these people's anecdotal evidence, you know, with their stories about how it helped them. But we need actually hard scientific evidence, like the FDA, which goes through a stringent process, to say that these are medicines. So we don't know what we're giving these people. I mean, we could be doing more harm than good. And how do we trust the people that are actually distributing these medicines at pot shops? We don't know, do they have a license?
I need you to wrap up.
Like a medical certificate or like a doctor, a degree of some sort? So, yeah, I think that is what.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good job. You did a great job. Thank you. That is the end of our speakers for the evening. So I think, if no other speakers, I'll look and see if we have any remarks. I'll start down with Councilmember Green. Do you have any remarks you want to make?
Sure. I am tasked to serve on the RISWA board, which is why we are going to do that awesome trash walk on April 19th from 4:00 to 6:00. So come hang out. If you're watching online, please RSVP because we are filling up. Also, at RISWA, I posted a link on our Facebook page as well, but we went over all of the different new assembly bills coming down. In AB 1884, actually, which I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, is the Straw Ban Bill. As a guy who always uses straws because I hate to have juice in my mustache, I too am okay with asking for a straw. So, you know, it's definitely something that we're looking into. There are a lot of new bills that are in the early stages in the Assembly and the Senate that have to do with being green and keeping the environment clean. So definitely check that out. Also, I just want to thank all of the young people who spoke tonight. You guys all spoke so well, so passionately. You scared me just a little bit. So, good job, brother, and thank you guys all for staying tonight and just being engaged in the community. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Franklin.
I just want to thank everybody that came to speak to us on all the different issues. I'd like to visit with some of the folks that came to talk about marijuana, so if you stick around, maybe we can have a moment of conversation. But thank you to all you who came to speak your mind and be heard tonight. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of things to report out. Yesterday, at the California League of Cities Monthly Meeting, Tony Winnie and I and Kathy Valdez, bless her heart, she goes every month, thank you, we had a really great presentation from Maureen Stapleton over at the San Diego County Water Authority, talking about the latest on the lawsuit and the amount of money that we should be getting back if that's, once that's finalized. And that would be coming back to the consumers as far as rate reductions. So it wouldn't go out, you know, to any entities or jurisdictions as money that you'll never get back. It will actually go back to the ratepayers. So that was a great report, a lot of information on that, and I'll try to get some of it and post it online for you. And also the PACE program, we had representatives for the PACE program talking about that, which was very interesting. And I will be going back to the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee meeting on Thursday, and then I think next week or the week after, I'll be going back up to Sacramento for Legislative Action Days. And then just as we had our budget, draft budget discussion today at the Encino Wastewater Authority, where the mayor and I both are on the board for that, this morning at that meeting, Elmer Alex and I were in the meeting where we just, we talked about the budget over there and the cities that make up the membership of that agency, and that was drafted. That'll be coming back to us as a member agency pretty soon for us to review it so that we can approve it at the Board of Directors over there. So those are the things I want to report out on, but I also want to say thank you to everybody who's here today and everybody who took time to come up and speak to us and share with us your thoughts and your concerns, and I absolutely love the passion. Thank you.
Councilwoman Aguilera.
I actually have nothing more to report out. I think our upcoming meeting for North County Transit District, I'll be able to report out on that after it happens. And I also want to thank the people that showed up today and gave their opinions.
Very interesting. We appreciated it. So I have a couple of things. I just was going to say, talk about one thing, at our transportation, at San Diego Transportation, we had an interesting discussion about the electric vehicle programs, and they say there's going to be 6 to 7 million electrical vehicles by 2020, and the goal of the state is by 2025, 1.5 million zero-emission vehicles, which I think is, and then by 2030, they're going to have 5 million and 250,000 chargers. And the interesting will be with the chargers, because there's different kinds of chargers. There's one that, you know, that takes overnight, which is one in your garage, and then there's a, the chargers like we're putting in, that we have one downtown in our new parking lot. There's a charger there, but that takes usually two to three hours, they say. It's fast, but then they have, just put out a new charger that it takes like only a half an hour to charge the cars. So, but it'll be interesting. I was thinking how, when you go out of state, California has, is really changing over fast, but when you look at across the country, they don't have that many chargers. So I don't know how you drive from here to Texas with your electric vehicle. I'm not sure how that would go. You'd run out of charge in the middle of the desert somewhere, maybe. But anyway, it'll be an interesting, it's interesting, it's changing. Things are changing very fast around here. I have some comments here, and first thing I was going to say is, the city council and I were at a groundbreaking ceremony yesterday at 100 Main Street downtown on the project on the corner of South Santa Fe and Main Street. We've waited a really long time to see development on that vacant property, and I'm pleased that this developer chose to invest in our great city. The new development will pride housing, employment opportunities, economic activity, and help to revitalize the downtown. It's going to be really a mainstay of our downtown. It would be a beautiful building. The Vista Library is hosting a bilingual book day for preschoolers tomorrow, April 11th at 3:30. Each child's going to receive a free book, and so for more information on that, contact the library. Their number is 760-643-5100. And then two fun events are scheduled for the Moonlight this weekend. On Friday, April 13th, we have Betamax, the '80s Prom Night Event. And on Saturday, the 14th, we're showing the family classic movie Princess Bride on the big screen. So that will be fun. The tickets are on sale now at TheMoonlightStage.com. And lastly, registration for summer camps begins on Monday, April 16th at 8:30. You can register online at VistaRecreation.com or at the Jim Porter Recreation Center located at 1200 Vail Terrace Drive in Bingle Terrace Park. And those are my announcements for the night. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a few. The second workshop for the Townsite and West Los Angeles Corridor Study is going to be held on Wednesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM here at the Civic Center. If you want more information on that, you can go to CityofVista.com. Volunteers are needed to conduct business surveys during the city's Downtown Business Walk, which is on May 31st. And again, more information on that on CityofVista.com. And last, the San Diego County's Annual Creek to Bay Cleanup is Saturday, April 21st from 9:00 AM to noon, and the city of Vista is hosting at a site on Buena Creek. So volunteers are needed for that as well. For more information or to register, you can go to CreekToBay.org. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, how about down the city clerk? Kathy or Claire? No, nothing tonight? Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 7:20.